Our final two panels will focus on the guideline that relates to acceptance of responsibility by defendants. Our panelists include Trent Shores from the first panel and Mr. Thomas Patton. Mr. Patton became the federal public defender for the Central District of Illinois in January 2015. Before becoming the federal public defender, he served as an assistant federal public defender for 18 years in the Central District and in the Western District of Pennsylvania. Mr. Patton also served as a law clerk for Judge Richard Mills. Mr. Patton graduated from the Southern Illinois University School of Law in 1993. Mr. Shores?
Thank you very much, Chair. The Department with regard to the amendment regarding challenges to relevant conduct and acceptance of responsibility strongly objects to the Commission's proposed amendment concerning a defendant's ability to falsely deny relevant conduct at sentencing without losing the downward adjustment for acceptance of responsibility. We object to both of the options proposed because both options raise the same concerns for us. The first option would provide that a defendant may make a non-frivolous challenge to relevant conduct without affecting his or her ability to obtain a reduction. The second option would provide that a defendant may make a challenge to relevant conduct without affecting his ability to obtain a reduction unless the challenge lacks an arguable basis in either fact or law. It bears mentioning, I believe, at the outset, that albeit for dramatically different reasons, the proposed amendment has been criticized by both the Department of Justice and by members of the Defense Bar. At least a portion of the Defense Bar believes that the proposed amendment does not solve the alleged problem, and the Department believes the proposed amendment is unnecessary and will spawn further litigation. First, as the Department of Justice noted in its comment letter, the proposed amendment is unnecessary. The Commission has not identified a circuit split regarding the interpretation of the current language, nor has the Department experienced problems with the current language. And in my experience in practicing as a federal prosecutor over the last 10 years, I will say the district courts in which I've had the honor to appear, the district judges have had no problem in interpreting the existing language as it pertains to this particular matter. Put it simply, this proposed amendment seems to be a solution in search of a problem. On the other hand, it is a virtual certainty that if the Commission enacts either of the proposed options, litigation will commence almost immediately. Defendants and their attorneys will read the new language as providing them with an opportunity to plead guilty, then broadly and aggressively challenge relevant conduct, and nonetheless seek an acceptance of responsibility adjustment, regardless of whether the sentencing court finds these challenges to have merit. Litigation will then ensue over whether the challenges made to relevant conduct are quote "non-frivolous" or quote "lack an arguable basis in either fact or law." All of this litigation will negate one of the primary reasons why a defendant who pleads guilty receives an adjustment for acceptance of responsibility in the first place. That is, to allow the parties to avoid litigation costs and to conserve scarce judicial resources. It is called acceptance of responsibility, after all. Instead, it would effectively turn sentencing hearings into many trials, consuming judicial resources while sentencing hearings, while defendants reap the benefit that was designed to conserve those very resources. And on that point, I want to note that the Department agrees with the Victims Advisory Group that the proposed amendment would not be victim-friendly because it would result in forcing the victims to testify in a type of mini-trial at the time of sentencing if the defendant challenges relevant conduct. A defendant has no right to receive an acceptance of responsibility reduction, and it is a defendant's burden to prove that he has quote "clearly demonstrated acceptance of responsibility" end quote. The current guidelines appropriately recognize that a defendant cannot meet that burden if he or she falsely denies relevant conduct. In those cases where a defendant has a legitimate concern about relevant conduct, the current guidelines permit him or her to raise that concern without losing acceptance of responsibility reduction. While the ground rules for the current provision are well settled, the proposed amendment will create confusion, and it will generate litigation, and will create more complexity in the sentencing and guideline process. For these reasons, the Department believes that the risks and downsides of the proposed approach far outweigh any potential benefit. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you, and would welcome the opportunity to answer questions that you may have.
Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks for having me and addressing what is a serious national problem with the acceptance of responsibility adjustment. And it's a national problem because the difference in the way the commentary language is being interpreted in different circuits is resulting in unwarranted sentencing this year. As Judge Pryor mentioned in introducing me, I have practiced both in the Central District of Illinois and for 15 years in the Western District of Pennsylvania. Those two districts take vastly different approaches to this particular issue of can you challenge relevant conduct and be unsuccessful and yet still get acceptance of responsibility? In the Western District of Pennsylvania, in 15 years, I never had a probation officer or an assistant U.S. attorney or a judge suggest that my client would lose acceptance of responsibility because I filed an objection to relevant conduct, either arguing that conduct that everybody agreed happened simply didn't meet the legal definition of relevant conduct, or saying the government hadn't met its burden of proving relevant conduct by a preponderance of the evidence based on sufficiently reliable information. That's not the case in the Central District of Illinois. I'll give you a couple of examples. We represented a young man, Modesto, who pled guilty to conspiracy to distribute cocaine and distributing cocaine. He drove cocaine from Chicago to central Illinois. He was not involved in setting up the deals. He just was a driver. He knew he was transporting cocaine, but he had no idea of the amounts. He just wasn't given that information. The government witness said Modesto had made nine trips. Modesto said, yes, that's right. Modesto cooperated and proffered and said, yeah, I did this. I just, I don't know the amounts. The government witness didn't give any estimates of the amounts. The last two trips, there were seizures that were nine ounces each, but the first seven trips, there was just no information on the amounts. And the probation office wrote the pre-sentence report assuming that all nine of the trips were nine ounces. And we objected, saying, look, the last two clearly were nine ounces, but the first seven, we just have no information about what amounts are involved. You know, the government's witness hasn't said is this the same amount or anything like that. And the probation officer's response in the final version of the pre-sentence report was to recommend the denial of acceptance of responsibility because we were falsely denying and frivolously contesting relevant conduct. Our client, Jordan, was charged with and pled guilty to possessing methamphetamine with intent to distribute. The indictment charged meth actual, but at the time of the plea, in the written factual basis of the plea agreement written by the government, it was just meth, just mixture substance meth, and pled guilty to that. And the pre-sentence report came back saying it was ICE and applying the base offense levels based on ICE. And of course, as you know, ICE is a defined term under the guidelines. It has to be at least 80% pure. And so we asked if we could please see the lab reports that showed that the mixture substance was at least 80% pure. And this was in the informal process of trying to resolve. And the probation officer's response was, if you insist on having to get the lab reports, you're risking acceptance of responsibility. And thankfully, at that point, the government said, look, we'll agree to the 10-year mandatory minimum that applied whether it was actual or ICE. But just asking for a lab report to say, could we see that if this really does meet the definition of ICE, resulted in the threat of loss of acceptance of responsibility. And so what is happening in the circuits and districts in which the case law is basically if you challenge and lose by definition, you have falsely denied? Your defense counsel and the defendants are basically scared off of making what would be valid objections because you have to tell your client, look, if you make this, I think we have a valid argument, but you have to know if we make it lose, you could lose acceptance. And they look at the sentencing table and say, geez, I'm right here now. If I go up three levels, you know, that's, you know, two, three, four, five years. I can't risk that. Then we can't make those arguments. And the whole premise of our system, whether criminal or civil, is the best way for the judge to get the correct, right answer is for both parties to be able to litigate their positions. And that helps develop the record, the legal arguments and the factual record to help the judge get it right. And by not allowing us the opportunity to make those arguments, or to say, if you do, you're risking this massive reduction, it's preventing us from helping the judge get the legal conclusions right and make sure the facts are correct.
Hey, um, so I have a question. Mr. Patton, the examples you just provided are what probation officers said, positions they took. What happened with, in those cases with the court?
Sure. I'm sorry.
The second one, the second one, we know the government.
Right. And in the first one, the government eventually, by the time of the sentencing, said, yeah, we agree, we can't prove nine ounces for each nine times. And, but the fact that it got worked out in that way, I would caution you against saying that shows the system works because...
Well, my concern is whether we really have examples where the court, where courts are saying that any denial of any fact or any argument about a guideline issue results in a denial of acceptance because there's, you know, that's not what the, what the current guideline says, nor is it what the proposed amendment says.
I do have an example where the client lost acceptance. It was, it was a client CJ, or private counsel represented in front of Judge Mills, Judge I clerked for, where they did a search warrant of his house. They found a gun on the top of cabinets in a kitchen where you couldn't see it without getting up on top. And it was a house our client didn't live in, but he admitted he had been selling drugs out of the house.
Yeah.
And he admitted to the drugs that were found in the house. But none of the cooperating witnesses said they ever saw the defendant with a gun. They'd never said, hey, he's a guy that carries, nothing. They fingerprinted the gun, found fingerprints. None of them were the defendant's. And the defendant said, look, they just haven't established that I possessed that gun. He didn't come up and testify and say, they didn't meet their, the initial burden of proof that I knew that gun was there and I possessed it. The government said, no, Judge, a gun found in close proximity to drugs, you can assume that he knew about it. And unless, and so he has to prove that it's clearly improbable that the gun was related to the drugs. He hasn't given you anything. And by the way, if you rule in our favor, that by definition means he's falsely denied relevant conduct, so he should lose the three levels. Judge Mills says, yep, you didn't, the gun was there. You didn't produce evidence saying you didn't possess it. And so I'm finding that the gun bump, the two-level gun bump under TD 1.1 applies and said, then by definition, you are falsely denying relevant conduct because I have found that it is relevant conduct. Lose your three levels of accept, for acceptance of responsibility.
Take it up?
Uh...
Want to appeal?
No, because there's an appeal waiver. And that's the thing. I mean, you, these, these are folks that have waived their right to a trial, right? And the, the district court has been saved that time. The government has been saved that time. No sentencing hearing comes close to taking as much time as a trial. So they've waived that. And the governments received that benefit. The district courts received that benefit. So they've waived that, most of them...
It appears to me, though, that in the event that you had that kind of circumstance where the judge says that by definition means that you can't get acceptance, that that would be, in the absence of, say, an appeal waiver, something that you could bring to the Court of Appeals and say, this was not a frivolous objection?
In the Seventh Circuit and the Eighth Circuit, you would lose because they both say, they both have case law, and it's laid out in our commentary. That says, if you challenge it and you lose, you have falsely denied. And the Eighth Circuit has a case that explicitly says, we don't have to decide whether it's frivolous or not. If you've challenged it and the district court has overruled your challenge, by definition, you have falsely denied, so you lose. The Seventh Circuit case law is terrible. It just, and again, I would urge you to read the commentary, our written comments, because it lays it out in great detail.
I do. I hate to get into the specific cases. I don't think they establish national trend on anything. But in the answer, draft a better plea agreement that indicates in the plea agreement that we're going to contest this issue, courts aware of it, not caught off guard.
That's what...
Not caught off guard. I've never had this issue ever come up when it's clear in the plea agreement, you're going to contest it.
In the last case that I told you about, the guy that lost acceptance for the gun, it was made clear at the plea that there was not an agreement about the gun. I mean, it was plain as day that there was a disagreement about that. And he still lost acceptance because he challenged it. The judge ruled against him. Therefore, you're falsely denying. Therefore, you lose acceptance.
So you knew what the case law was in the circuit. You knew that there was an issue of a gun, and you included a plea agreement that had a waiver.
Well, our office didn't represent the person.
Well, the attorney, correct?
Right. Yes, because he wanted to, and to get acceptance of responsibility. That's why he, he did it. And I'll notice, I'll note, the government didn't charge a 924C count saying that it possessed the gun in connection with the drugs because they didn't want, apparently didn't think they had the proof to show that he knowingly possessed the gun in furtherance of the drugs. You know, the government has complete control over what gets charged, right? I mean, complete control. And they have control over what gets pled to because, you know, you either plead to everything, or at least in the district we practice in, if there's going to be a, a count dismissed, you must do a written plea agreement that will contain a, an appeal waiver and a 2255 waiver. They will not dismiss account without that written plea agreement that has the waivers. And so, yeah, and then the problem is, in other parts of the country, in the situation that Your Honor talks about, then you say, yeah, Judge, we have this disagreement. Fraud cases are a common example. Oftentimes, at the time of the change of plea, the parties say, you know, Judge, we haven't come to an exact agreement on the amount of the loss. It's not an element of the offense, so you can plead guilty without saying that there's an exact amount. And then between the time of the plea and the sentencing, the parties work to see, can we get to an agreement? And of course, from the defense side, you're only fighting about it if it's going to move the guideline range, you know? So it, you know, $5,000 difference, but it doesn't move the guideline range down, you're not going to litigate it at sentencing. And if you do litigate it at sentencing, it's not a mini-trial because the rules of evidence don't apply. You can use the hearsay. You don't have to go through all the foundational stuff. You cut right to the chase. If it's a legal argument, you just have the legal argument. If it's a factual argument, most times it's an agent that testifies, if anybody testifies. In 21 years, I have never, ever had a child victim ever have to testify. I did a child pornography production case where the child victim didn't have to testify, didn't testify. They just don't. If it's allegations about, there were any allegations about hands-on offenses, almost always the child has been interviewed in a forensic interview setting that's videotaped, and so that videotape is introduced as evidence. And the defense counsel, you look at it and tell your client, hey, that's what that is. We're not, you know, you're going to challenge that. And it, it just witnesses, I've never had a fraud victim have to come in and testify. If the fights, the fights are done, most time in fraud, it's more about legal, is it part of the relevant conduct, rather than factual about did this happen? So it's, I don't think, I think the fear is that victims would have to come in and testify and there'd be many trials, just, it's not borne out by the experience in the parts of the country where you can challenge, make these challenges and not be threatened with losing acceptance of responsibility.
So I have a question for the government here. So the probation officers gave us comments and feedback that they also think this is a problem, that this is, you know, nationwide, it may not be in all places, but there are places where there's a chilling effect on the ability of defense councils to be able to raise good faith legal arguments. And, you know, they, they have the line at the end that sometimes it takes a defendant's objection to flesh out the truth, which is why it's important objections made in good faith be permitted within acceptance of responsibility. And, you know, and everything we know about innocence trials and mistakes in cases suggests this is really important. So if the government would just accept the premise, for the sake of my question, that this is a problem that does need a solution, which I recognize your comments are that it's not, but, but just work with me and assume that there's, there's a problem out there or that I think that there is one. Of the options for solving the problem, you know, we had a couple, and I'm curious what the government's position is on the two possibilities because I recognize you don't wrestle with this because you say there's nothing that we can do that solves it. But, but is there a sense as between the two which does a better job? Because I'm trying to get a way that we could clarify for judges that it is acceptable for defendants to make good faith legal arguments and for them to make them, however we want to phrase it. These challenges on facts that are, they're not frivolous, they're not, that sends a message different from what we're currently sending where we have districts where judges think this isn't okay. And, and you know, what we know is there are definitely AUSAs out there that tell people you're not going to get acceptance unless you sign the plea wa, your appeal waiver and you don't challenge this. So if, if we were trying to solve it, does the government have a way in which it could be phrased that the government would agree would also be acceptable challenges that wouldn't make somebody lose acceptance of responsibility?
Commissioner Barco, thank you for the question. I, I cannot agree that either of those options are acceptable. That, that simply is not based in what I have experienced in speaking with my colleagues across the country, is the practical experience in courtrooms, that judges are having these experiences. And what I want to get, go to is, I think it is dangerous to generalize some individual experiences, or if there is one AUSA who has said that you will lose acceptance of responsibility if you contest X, Y, or Z, because the guidelines as they exist today do provide an avenue through which defendants may make those good faith legal challenges without losing acceptance of responsibility. And when we look at the development of the guidelines originally, I think that, frankly, as was mentioned recently in the publication, Federal Sentencing, The Basics, it's referenced that relevant conduct was a cornerstone of development of the acceptance of responsibility and of the guidelines because it helps to limit or reduce the effect of the prosecutor's charging decision and allows the court to actually get to what the heart of the offense conduct is. The result, or the idea that the facts at sentencing and the relevant conduct is just a government's version of the facts, I think is a bit of a misnomer. Plea agreements in the plea process take two people. That is a negotiable document. And I know as a regular practice in the Northern District of Oklahoma, that when there is a disagreement as to the extent of relevant conduct, the defense attorneys will request a carve-out and have a conditional plea wherein they reserve the right to appeal a particular contested sentencing issue. It often may relate to relevant conduct. We may have a sentencing hearing on that particular issue. Where there is no disagreement, the commentary provides that a defendant does not have to speak in agreement to admit the conduct. He or she may stand silent and still receive credit for acceptance of responsibility and then take that up on, on appeal if they need be. But I think the plea process certainly allows for that. And with regard to this idea that it won't create many trials, I absolutely think that it will when you have multiple victims. And one of the benefits, my colleague here referenced a 924C example in which it was not charged, and I believe he stated the government could have charged that if they had the evidence. Well, what I don't know from that situation is if one of the benefits of entering a plea was that the government agreed to not file a 924C charge.
And I understand, and I don't, I'm not really interested in the facts of any one of these individual examples.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I'm more concerned with the fact that the intent behind the, the escape valve, as you already, like, as you said, it's already in there. Like, the idea of allowing a defendant to challenge this is one that's already in the guidelines. Look, we, I think we all agree, we want valid legal challenge and we want non-frivolous factual challenges because we want to get to the truth in cases and make sure punishment is proportionate to what someone did. And so my concern is, so I assume that's the baseline we all agree on because that's already in here. And so the only question is if the current language is sending a false signal to some judges and some AUSAs that any challenge makes it so that you lose it. And so what I was trying to get at is a way to make this language better so that the agreement that I thought we all had about what someone could do. And so if I'm hearing you correctly, it's that the government doesn't want to change the language because just by the change of the language, you're afraid you're going to get a coordination over it. I'm, I'm worried that if we don't change the language, we're going to continue to have the problem.
I, I, well, if I, hold on a minute, Judge Pryor, and let's have, some, let's let Mr. Shores respond to Commissioner Barco, and then we'll, then we'll hear your question, if that's okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I appreciate that. I think that the reason that the government does not view either of those options as better is that we don't agree that the current language is confusing or is a problem. It should not be, and in my experience, my practice, it is not a problem in that it is sending the wrong message. I think it is incumbent on all of us as practitioners to understand the law. We have continuing legal education requirements that I, I think would benefit perhaps from further understanding that the sentencing guidelines as they're currently set up do not preclude defendants from making legal lawful challenges. And that doesn't mean that there is an automatic loss of acceptance of responsibility. I think that the proposals actually flip acceptance of responsibility on its head. It flips that burden wholesale. It's exact opposite of what acceptance of responsibility was originally intended to do in giving the benefit to the judge to get to the actual offense conduct.
Okay. Judge Pryor?
No, Judge, I believe that 3E 1.1 clearly reads, it's stated there in the negative, that a defendant who falsely denies or frivolously contests relevant conduct in those circumstances is when a defendant would lose acceptance of responsibility points. However, in circumstances where a defendant advances during, you know, challenges, say, to, to a pre-sentence investigation report as prepared, and it is not frivolous or it is not a false denial of that conduct, then the standards that's applied allow that defendant to still be considered for receiving their acceptance of responsibility points. So yes. With regard to discovery, it would be my expectation that if the United States is proposing that a defendant be held accountable at the time of sentencing for relevant conduct, that that defendant should have the oppo, that defendant's attorney should have the opportunity to receive discovery to see what the basis for that allegation or for that inclusion of that conduct is. And I don't know that a probation office could adequately or correctly calculate the relevant conduct or the sentencing calculation if they did not have the opportunity to review that discovery. I think that relevant conduct can. I don't know that I would assign the word frequently, but I think that that's certainly something that can occur because investigations are ongoing. There are times when defendants participate in a Rule 11 proffer after a change of plea and more conduct comes to light. But in that context, the defendant, if he or she is the one who offered or admitted to that conduct, that is not going to be held against them. However, if they withheld information or they did not participate in that proffer and new evidence comes to light, then I think it is appropriate that the sentencing court be allowed to consider it, to get to what is the heart of the totality of the offense conduct. Again, as I think is provided in 3E 1.1, we're talking about loss of acceptance of responsibility where a defendant falsely denies or frivolously contests relevant conduct that the judge finds the government has shown to be true by a preponderance of the evidence. Thank you, Judge.
I got to tell you both, this issue has frustrated me. Both sides' positions frustrate me, and I'll, and I'll tell you why. I read the current language, and I read the two options, and I cannot determine as a matter of law what the material difference is in any of them. They appear to me... They appear to me to mean exactly the same thing. And, and there does not appear to me to be any ambiguity in the guideline as it is presently written. I appreciate the issues Mr. Patton has raised and that the probation officers have raised about mistakes that are made in understanding the current guideline. And, and I would like to rectify that. On the other hand, I expect, I expect that court is making mistakes. That's why we have appellate review. On the other hand, I don't understand how, given my view that it all means exactly the same thing, why the government thinks that it's necessarily going to breed litigation. It would only, it seems to me, breed litigation if it was materially different. But, but, you know, that, that's, you can, both sides can react to it. That's, when I look at it, that, that's the concern I have.
Judge, I understand where you're coming from and where you read the language that's currently there in the proposed language and you say, I don't think there's a difference. But
Can you explain to me where there is?
This is where I think, this is how I think it would make a difference if you changed the language. Is, I think we make pretty clear in our written commentary, there are some courts of appeals, not just district courts, but courts of appeals that have agreed that if you factually challenge relevant conduct in any way and lose that objection, that that meets the definition of falsely denying relevant conduct. And therefore, whether it's legally frivolous or not, it doesn't matter because you have falsely denied.
Okay. And the, and the cases that you say stand for that proposition have been identified in your written submission.
Yes, and, and they're from, in the Seventh Circuit, they're from the late 80s, early 90s, and they, and, and from as recent as 2017 where they just keep citing the same line of cases.
I, I am interested in that. I was not aware until you made that representation earlier that there was really any evidence of a circuit split on this issue. And in the event that there really is a material difference in the case law among the circuits, it may be that there's a way to clarify the guideline and the context of resolving a circuit split. But, but that would be one way to dealing with the problem, right? We, we would say, these circuits say X, correct understanding of the guideline. These circuits say Y, incorrect understanding. We clarify, we agree with X, right?
And that's why, well, and one of the proposed, or one of the questions for comment in the proposal is if you should add explicit language, that simply making an unsuccessful challenge does not in and of itself establish, now, it's in the language that's in option two, does not establish that there was not a arguable basis in law or fact. That is something that's in addition to what's there now to help clarify what I think what I'm hearing from the commissioners is the understanding that there shouldn't be an automatic denial of acceptance just because there's been an unsuccessful challenge. That, that is something that is, it's not in option two or option one, but it's one of the, it's proposed for comment, should you add that? And I think that would be very important to make clear, to take, to take away this, to blunt the argument of, Your Honor, he challenged relevant conduct, he lost, therefore he's falsely denied, therefore he automatically loses acceptance.
Sure, go ahead, Judge Breyer.
Well, I'm very happy that because that's not the position the Department of Justice takes in the Central District of Illinois and in other circuits. Your Honor, I, I understand your point and I take your point. My experience over the past 20 years is the directives from DOJ do not always get implemented at the line AUSA or individual U.S. Attorney's Office. And that's not to cast aspersions on particular offices or AUSAs. It's just the reality is, is what the Department of Justice may say their official position is, and I don't at all question Mr. Shore's statement that that's the position of the Department of Justice.
Kind of like district judges, they don't always follow what the Court of Appeals say, right?
Yes, sir. Well, but also in addition, Judge Breyer is, in, at least in our district, oftentimes it's not the frivolously deny, it's the falsely, it's falsely, it's falsely deny, not frivolously deny. Where falsely deny is interpreted to mean if you file the objection and you lose, you by definition have falsely denied, therefore you lose acceptance.
Well, the problem with that one is
if in fact that would happen, that would be satisfactory, although our position, we believe this would be better if you took relevant conduct out of the acceptance calculus. But I, you know, the commission may not be real keen on doing that at this point, but
That proposal's not on the table.
Okay, yeah. It was one of the issues for comment. But, but Judge, and I'm not trying to dodge you, Judge Breyer, but it's just, if you're going to still consider relevant conduct and if every U.S. Attorney's Office and every AUSA would go into every district court and take that position, yes, that would be a, a big improvement over what we have. But I don't think that's going to happen absent the commission taking action to make clear that is what the commission intends. It has always intended 3E 1.1 to work. Because the language that's been there for the past 30 years has not been interpreted that way in some circuits. And I'm not saying it's not been interpreted that way all over the country, but then, of course, that's what causes the unwarranted sentencing disparity.
If, if I might, I'd like to comment
Yeah, I, I tell you this, we're going to bring this to a close.
Judge, and I'm, I'm sure, I'm looking forward to the phone call, I'm sure I'll have later today with the U.S. Attorney from the Northern District of California. Whatever the law may be in each individual circuit, right? There could be disparate interpretations from circuit to circuit or from district judge to district judge. But what I am articulating today and what I think Judge Breyer was talking about is, I mean, the plain language. I'm not sure why there's such a groundswell of surprise. I am reading the plain language of 3E 1.1. And so whatever the interpretation is in individual cases or by individual AUSAs, that doesn't matter to be negotiated among the parties during plea negotiations if they so choose. And if defendants do not agree with relevant conduct, then I would suggest that they not sign up for the plea agreement or they carve out a particular conditional plea so that they preserve their right to pursue that in the appellate courts.
I, okay.
Enough's enough. Thank you for your presentations today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.